There is a list of donations and things that... So, maybe on your way to the services, you might want to drop something in the box at the community center. Just wanted to let you know. And I just wanted to publicly thank all of the donations that we got for the very successful Halloween party, Star Market, the Chronicle, all of the pizza places. Everyone came together, well over 300 children, and adults had a fabulous time on Friday. Thank you.
Yeah, I heard it was a great time. Janelle?
Yep. So Carolyn, many dentists do a "bring back your candy" and they send it to the troops. Can we put Halloween candy in that bucket?
You can put candy in there, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim, how are you?
Good. Good evening. Jim Chevry from East Howard. Last spring during the No On Nine campaign, I had an opportunity to speak to a lot of Howard's residents about the Six Ponds DCPC and specifically the 25-acre parcel land along Hawks Nest Road. A common theme began to emerge. People really wanted this land to be preserved. One person after another urged me to look past the No On Nine campaign. And if we were successful in defeating question nine, they wanted me to work with the town to try to get this land into conservation use so future generations could enjoy this jewel that Howard has. To this day, I continue to get emails and Facebook messages from people looking to see where I am on this. Last week, I attended the planning board meeting where the board discussed the proposed zoning changes for East Howard. During those discussions, they opened up the meeting to public comment. There were several residents who spoke about the need and their desire to see land set aside to be used as offsets for future growth and green space. There were at least two people who I do not know who specifically brought up the Hawks Nest parcel and suggested that this land be used as such an offset. They spoke about how the land is owners unknown, no property tax has been paid on it, and since it is in the Six Ponds DCPC, it would be a perfect fit for both preservation and/or a buffer of sorts between the denser commercial zone that they're proposing and the residential areas of the DCPC. I think that between the wastewater discussions and the new zoning discussions that are occurring right now, acquiring this parcel would dovetail nicely into this plan. I think the time is right to start thinking about the possibility of having the town acquire this parcel for conservation, thereby removing it from inventory for future development. And I know from individual discussions I have had with several of you that you, at least in theory, support this idea. Ballot question number nine had a price tag for these 25 acres as being around $400,000. Given the large price tag that the wastewater plan is carrying, this is indeed a bargain and one I'm sure the voters would approve of. I come before you tonight to at least start a discussion on this and get a general sense of what the board thinks and see if you would at least in theory support such an idea. I am more than willing to assist this board or any other board that you would suggest, however I can, and I am open for any input or direction you might have. And I just wanted to kind of start a discussion at some point.
Thank you. We're not going to discussion tonight, but I will put it on the agenda for a future discussion.
Okay.
Just so people had noticed that we're going to talk about it.
That's what I was assuming.
So, happy to do that. I think the board will be pleased to do that.
Terrific.
At some time in the near future.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I was hoping for.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Under comments, I've been asked to just announce, and it's been on the radio and whatnot quite a bit, but Cape Tech is having an open house for seventh and eighth graders who might consider the tech school on Thursday night, November 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the tech school. So anybody interested in that as a youngster in seventh through eighth grade or even earlier that wants to get some exposure to that, you're welcome to attend that session. Mr. Ed, how are you?
Good. I'm doing fine.
Public comment and announcement, hopefully.
I have an announcement.
Okay.
In my role as President of the Harwich Cranberry Festival, as you know, last May we sponsored a concert using the new Montemoy Regional High School Theater, which was a great success, the purpose of which is to raise funds to help with the Cranberry Festival's scholarship funds. We are again doing another concert actually a week from tonight, November 9th. We're featuring a group from Cape Breton Island in Canada, Natalie McMaster and her husband Donal Leahy and their six children, and their five backup musicians. They do... Natalie and her husband Donal are sort of the royalty of Canadian Celtic music, fiddling and Irish step dancing. I think the program will be a wonderful show. And again, the benefits will go to... All proceeds from the show will go to the scholarship fund. We've been lucky to get a number of businesses locally as sponsors, principally Cape Hair, The Squire Restaurant in Chatham, Sativa, Cape Cod Chronicle is our principal media sponsor, and WMR Radio is our sort of broadcast sponsor. And then many other businesses have bought ads in the program book we'll be putting out. But I think if you like or enjoy Celtic Irish fiddle music, this will be one of the highest quality presentations on the Cape in many years. Well worth the show, and tickets are available at Sativa down in Harwichport or the Yellow Umbrella Books in Chatham. Or you can go online to the Cranberry Festival's website, harwichcranberryfestival.org, for other ways of connecting up for tickets.
So can people buy them at the door, Ed, or is...
Yes, though the remaining tickets will also be available at the door. And the show starts at 7:30 next Monday night.
So, oh, they're going to miss the selectmen's...
Well, you know...
It could end early, so you go over there, it'd be good.
It's... These performers are on a tour down the Atlantic coast in the United States, and they had some time free. Unfortunately, it was a Monday night, not the best night to put on a concert, but because of that and because they know that the benefits will benefit the scholarship program, we're getting them at a very reasonable rate, much less than they normally charge. So, we thought it was worth the effort to bring such a high-quality act.
Okay, so Monday, November 9th, 7:30 you said, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Yeah, anybody else?
At Montemoy, at the Montemoy High School?
Yeah. That's at the Montemoy High School auditorium, right? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Janelle?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, A, approve application for change of officers, directors, on liquor license for Allen Harbor Yacht Club, Inc., B, vote not to extend the lease of Phil Brick's Restaurant at Cranberry Valley Clubhouse and vote to issue a new RFP, C, accept the resignation of Mary Jane Watson as a member of the Board of Health, D, approve the proposed selectmen's holiday meeting schedule, and E, approve holiday hours as recommended by Town Administrator. Second?
Moving second to accept the consent agenda as presented, discussion. Here we now, we'll put it to the vote. All some favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote, thank you. Move on to public hearings and presentations. The first one is the public hearing, a classification hearing, Board of Assessors. Janelle, could I ask you to read, please, the notice of the public hearing?
The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 2nd, 2015, no earlier than 6:30 p.m. during their regularly scheduled meeting. The hearing will be held in the Dawnby Griffin Room located at Town Hall, 732 Main Street in Harwich for the purpose of deciding whether all property shall be taxed at the same rate for fiscal year 2016 as set forth in Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Massachusetts General Laws. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend the public hearing and provide information and testimony relevant to this matter. Peter S. Hughes, Chair, Linda A. Sebula, Vice Chair, Janelle M. Brown, Clerk, Angelo S. Lamontia, Michael D. McCaskill, Harwich Board of Selectmen.
Okay, and with that, we'll open the public hearing. Mr. Waystack, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Clark and Madam, new Madam, Assistant Town Administrator. I'm Richard Waystack, I'm Chairman of the Board of Assessors. I'm joined tonight by the board, Mr. Bruce Nightingale, Mr. Jay Kavanaugh, of course, with the Director of Assessing, Mr. Scannell, and our very capable staff, Donna Malino and Tammy Taylor. At a duly posted hearing, sorry, meeting, October 19th of this year, the Board of Assessors met to discuss classification or how the town taxes all property. The board voted unanimously to recommend to you, the Board of Selectmen, that you select a factor of one, that taxing all property in the town of Harwich at the same rate. Town has completed its triennial valuation, and we have been notified that we have been certified by the Commonwealth. Our thanks to Mr. Scannell and his very capable staff for the amount of work that goes into that triennial valuation. During the discussion of our meeting of classification, we did a full vetting of a residential exemption. We're seeing across the Cape different communities discussing offering a residential exemption for taxes. And a board member brought it to our attention that we hadn't really taken time to look at it very carefully. I believe we provided the executive summary in your packets, but we had a great discussion about it. Our liaison, Selectmen Sebula, was in attendance as we had that discussion. And after that full vetting, we unanimously voted, again, the factor of one, feeling that a residential exemption would not be in the best interest of our community at this time. It's my testimony, Mr. Chairman.
So I'd just be clear on that, Mr. Waystack, what your board then agreed to is that property taxes should be all treated the same.
Exactly. There's a motion that we have provided for you, that we tax all property the same in the town of Harwich, that we do not grant an open space exemption, that we do not grant a residential exemption, and that we do not grant a small commercial exemption.
Thank you. David, did you have something you wanted to bring up or say your...
Thank you.
By the way, my comment is your staff doesn't get in early enough. We have an ongoing thing when I show up to the agenda on, it's 7:30 or so on Wednesday mornings, it's a question, who gets here first? And they always beat me, except for last week. I slept over.
Keep an eye on them, Mr. Chairman.
On...
Yeah, just a report that we have finished the revaluation with the state. And at this time, usually we make a report on what the outcome of that is. We mailed out postcards to everyone, went through all the Department of Revenue requirements. The town-wide increase in value was about 114 million. Of that, about 52 million was new growth from new construction and that type of thing. So the values of property in the town, townwide, went up about 2.5%. And we expect the tax rate to go up approximately 2.5% as well. So not huge differences, but some people will go down, some people will go up more than the average, as we understand. And... But the Department of Revenue has lost a number of people from retirements and early retirements. We were thankful with Paul Capinos and our vendors to get through the process in a timely way. So this, for the first time in recent history, is going to be the final decision tonight, hopefully. And we will get you some paperwork afterwards to be signed, depending on how the town votes. And the Director of Finance and myself will be working on the tax rate.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Here we now, you all set?
Just briefly, again, we make a recommendation, the decision of how we tax the community is totally your decision as a board. And that, again, we remind you that our Board of Assessors has recommended unanimously that you tax all property at the same rate in the community.
Thank you. So here we now, further public comments, I'll close the public hearing at this point in time. And now it's up to the board to take up the matter. It's a recommendation in front of us, this is a motion, it's in your packet, if anybody's interested in pursuing that.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to comment that I was present at this meeting where they discussed all of the issues surrounding how residential exemptions, et cetera. And it was a really robust discussion. It was detailed, it was technical, and I commend the Board of Assessors for having that discussion in the serious nature that they did.
Good.
And with that, I will make a motion that we... I just lost my place here. There it is. I move that we select a factor of one, taxing all property at the same rate, that we do not grant an open space exemption, that we do not grant a residential exemption, and that we do not grant a small commercial exemption.
Here's a second.
Second.
Okay, moving second to approve the recommendation, which is select a factor of one taxing all property at the same rate, that we don't, do not grant an open space exemption, that we do not grant a residential exemption, and that we do not grant a small commercial exemption. Discussion on the motion. Here we now, we'll put it to the vote. All some favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. You got it, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work, we appreciate it. And now we look forward, moving on to annual meetings, I think, Mr. Waystack, you'd like to give us the Board of Assessors' annual report.
Be very brief, Mr. Chairman. You have our report, I believe you had it a couple of weeks ago, it's in your packets. But I did want to bring to your attention, we are obviously at full board, attendance is outstanding, the board works very hard. This is one of the few boards that you have to be certified to be a member of, and each of the members of the board have gone to school and have been certified by the Commonwealth. The board does a lot of work. You know, we see some of us are the most vulnerable citizens in our community as we assist them through a number of exemptions and credits on their taxes. Mr. Sebula was very kind about our discussion about the residential exemption, but it was a robust discussion. And what came of that is that we realized we still have a number of vulnerable residents in this community. And you'd be surprised how many of our residents are getting by on very minimal social security as their total income. And when I say very little, we see people with income as low as $7,000 to $8,000 to $9,000 a year in social security. These people are filing senior exemptions, which the Commonwealth allows us, and the Commonwealth, in its wisdom, granted for those seniors in need with criteria of a certain amount of income and assets to receive a $500 exemption of their taxes. Town, the Commonwealth also voted in 2002, a local option to allow a community to increase that to $1,000. We find that that is not sufficient for some of our residents and some of our taxpayers. And so, our discussion brought us to a couple of articles that we plan on filing this year at the annual town meeting. I know we can't discuss it in detail tonight, but I would request that you agenda it for a future occasion to have us discuss. We will vet it through the town administrator first to bring to you. What we're planning on doing is asking the town to allow us to increase that exemption for some of our taxpayers from $1,000 to $1,500. And there's an impact of it, and we'll be requesting money that's already in our overlay account, so we will not be asking for any additional funds from the community, but the impact will be at approximately $50,000 to really have a major impact on some of our most vulnerable taxpayers and residents. We're also going to be asking you to support us in reaching out to our legislators to ask the state to increase this as well, as they did in 2004, to increase that from $500 to $1,000 as a local option, not requiring any city or town to do so, but giving them the option if they feel necessary for their citizens. We feel that we could get through Representative Peak and Senator Wolf to get this legislation filed for us so that others across the Cape will be able to take advantage of this. Happy to entertain any questions of our annual report or of these articles that we're going to be presenting to you at a future time. And again, I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that you schedule a time for us on the agenda to have a further discussion of this matter.
Yeah, what I would suggest, Richard, is you craft at least the guts of an article.
We have.
So you have something to look at.
We have.
Vet it with the town administrator, and we'll get it on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Could you give us an update or any information on the senior tax work-off program, a number of people involved?
Sure, I'll turn that over to the Director of Assessing, Mr. Scannell. I will say that the staff has taken over the criteria of vetting those who are necessary. It's a great program for folks. You know, if people are watching tonight, if you're having difficulty with paying your taxes, if you are a senior, it's a great work-off program. Many of our seniors are already volunteering in different areas throughout the community. And if we can, they can take advantage of that to work off some of their taxes, it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
David?
Yes, thank you. The program is working quite well. As you know, it's a selectmen's program that we had passed at town meeting. You had set an upper limit of 30 participants, I believe. We have at least a couple dozen that are currently employed in it, and the way we refer to it is paid volunteer work type of thing, and then we can take a credit after placing... We vet them really with income and requirements and that type of thing. And then Barbara Ann finds them different departments there where their skills are needed. We go through that, and then we apply up to $1,000 off of their tax bill, say, in addition to the senior exemption, so they can get up to $2,000 off their bill that way.
Okay, and I would just say, keep us posted as to the number of people that take advantage of it, and if the need becomes greater on our side, you know, on the youth side versus the folks that want to do it, you know, once you bump up against that limit, we could consider doing something about that, if need be.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Just a second, Janelle.
Mr. Scannell, in that program, they can take advantage of up to $1,000. How many hours of work do they have to volunteer for that?
It's at the minimum wage, which has been changing, but I believe it's nine...
110.
111 hours currently. And so from last year, I mentioned to a number of the volunteers that they got a raise from $8 an hour to $9 an hour. And because their hours went down, they also increased their vacation time.
And guess what? They get more than they got from social security, so as far as the rate goes, yeah. Yeah, other questions on the board, or Richard, you have a comment?
Just to follow up on that, we'd love to see more people take advantage of that, but we find some of our citizens who are older, who are not able to volunteer, and that's where we're looking at some of these other options for them to... Again, we've got some folks in this community, people don't understand, you know, they're not making it. And it's a very proud generation, you know, and they're paying their taxes, they're paying their fuel bills, they're getting their food, and they're getting their medications. And people at that age should not have to be making those decisions. So anything that we can do as a community, as a board, as a Board of Selectmen, to be able to assist them, we'd like to do so.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the board? Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, we'll look forward to your articles. Next, we have the Harwich Housing Authority. Bob McCready, how are you? I see you're on here twice, this is good.
Yeah.
Maybe if you're nice, we'll take two in a row.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Bob McCready, Chair of the Harwich Housing Authority, and I'm here with John Stewart, the Executive Director, who will give the Housing Authority's report.
Good evening.
Good evening. You should have a copy of the report.
We do.
Okay. There was one change in that, since I forwarded it to you. Robin Wilkins resigned from the board in October due to health reasons. So currently, our board, should be a five-member board, we only have three members. Robin's position is vacant and the state appointee. Last year, the state passed the Housing Bill 235, and in that is a proposal to redesign the boards for the Housing Authorities. They decided that they're going to do that, they don't know how. It's going to be another year and a half before that happens, the last memo I got. So with a three-member board, quorum gets difficult. So just a plug, if anybody's out there that would be interested, now's a good time. The Housing Authority is still managed, we're in a management agreement with Chatham, and it's run under the Chatham Office, which has been working out very well for the Housing Authority and the families that live in our housing. The office used to be open 12 hours a week, it's now open 40 hours a week. And it's helped us financially in that I can swap maintenance staff back and forth between the two. It used to be Harwich had a 14-hour maintenance person, so if anything happened in the three days he wasn't working, we had to hire a plumber or electrician. Now I can just send my guy from Chatham over, and it has helped our budget immensely. As far as the state programs, we continue to run the MRVP program, which is a Massachusetts rental voucher. They have increased our vouchers from, we had 13, they've given us seven more, so we have 20 vouchers, which, these vouchers are designed so that it offsets people's rent so that they don't pay. The maximum they would pay is 40%. It tries to aim in at 30, but the maximum, depending upon their income and their rent, would be 40%. And with rents what they are, we have to seek waivers on just about every voucher that we issue because rents are just so high in the town. But that's been working out well with the additional seven. We also have the family housing, we only have a dozen units. Three are, 10 are three-bedroom, and two are two-bedroom. We have one that is set up wheelchair accessible, and those are on Long Pond Drive and Headwaters Drive. And those are based on 20% of the person's income is what their rent is for that program. And the third state program we have is the group home that we lease to the Fellowship Health Resources, that's on Debo Road West. And that is an eight-bedroom unit that they lease from us, and they've been leasing that from us for quite a number of years. The state, several years ago, started their capital projects program. Used to be you had to beg for money to get anything fixed, and now they allocate a certain amount of dollars per Housing Authority. And with that, we've been able to replace all our roofs, we're replacing windows. It's been an excellent program. It cuts down on the annual budget cost by pushing the big projects off. Our town programs, we just received $300,000 for the rental assistance program, and that has been, that has been filling quickly. We have 20 households, and we're processing applications for that every week. That's going very well. The buy-down program, which we received money for in 2013, for whatever reason, the state is dragging their feet on giving us the approval for the affordable housing advertisement, is all it comes down to, is the Affordable Housing Plan. It's been submitted, we're just waiting for approval, and once we have that, we will have $150,000, $75,000 per house to pay towards a down payment for two families. And those will then be deed restricted, so those will remain affordable in the future. And the other town program we have is the Housing Mortgage Assistance Program, which Housing Assistance Corp. runs for us, and that assists people who are in foreclosure or going into foreclosure. If they can refinance with their bank, then we will pay one month of their mortgage just to get them on cycle. And that's been running very well. We're down to our last 18... last eighteen hundred dollars, so we'll probably be looking for more money for that in the near future. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the board?
I have a quick question. So the Harwich buy-down with the seventy-five thousand per house?
Yes.
Is that for new construction?
No.
So it's to help people who want to buy...
Buy an existing house.
And they have to be first-time buyers?
Yes.
So it's similar to the thing Mala may have told us about from the Housing Committee, right? Yeah, same thing? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Brooke, did you have a comment, question?
Brooke Williams, West Harwich. I just had a couple of quick questions. I appreciated on the website and the packet, the Housing Authority presentation to the selectmen was available, which is great, and something I'm going to bring up on the Community Preservation Committee. But in regard to that, it mentioned the programs that were, they're involved in, and I think there were some things that were missing, and I wanted to bring one up. There was a program that was passed by town meeting, I think it was called the Infrastructure Fund. And this was supposed to be money that would be available in the case of development of housing, and I believe it was two hundred thousand dollars. And the reason I raise this question is, as, my understanding is, there was a demolition permit on, you know, ninety-three, ninety-seven Main Street, West Harwich, which I don't think has been rescinded. I was sorry to hear about Mr. Wilkins' health issues, but I think we have to be aware that that's existing housing that may be demolished. And the reason I raise this point about the Infrastructure Fund is that I think it's defined by the Housing Authority, and I believe the Housing Committee. And I think that one thing we may want to consider is the importance of the existing housing stock. And if there are units that, especially that are historic, but also are providing housing, that there may be ways to, find ways to preserve some of those units as part of redevelopment. And I think that if, you know, town meetings provide this fund, I think that the Housing Authority and the Housing Committee should perhaps just consider whether that would be a possibility, because as this demolition permit is out there, there's a year under which alternatives can be developed, and that time is winding down. And so I think that that's an important program that was passed by the town, and, you know, there's no mention of it. I don't know if there's any accounting of that exactly. You know, is that in an interest-bearing account, or what that's been used for? I know that there had been some allocation from that on the ninety-three, ninety-seven, but that project was supposedly is canceled, whatever. And I think that brings up to the second point in terms of on housing, but also the CPC, is when things are canceled, is there accounting available under for the housing aspect of what the monies that were spent? And, you know, how can we find that, you know, for both the ongoing, this infrastructure fund, and then also for projects that are canceled or something, whatever.
All right, thank you. Bob, wait, hang on a second. Bob, you aware of the Infrastructure Fund?
Yes. There was a, there was an article, a CPC article, passed, oh, this is probably now four to five years ago, that was for two hundred thousand dollars originally. It's, I think it was a Jerry Loftus-originated article, in terms of trying to establish, originally trying to bring forth a possibility, a pool of funds, so that when there was a time-sensitive issue that came up with regard to housing, there might be funds somewhere available without having to go through the twelve to eighteen months that it could take otherwise to approach CPC again. That, some of that fund money has been used. Almost all of the rest of it was, at one time, approved by the Housing Authority as part of the funding for ninety-three to ninety-seven, Route 28. And then when that, when that project fell through, that money was officially rescinded, canceled, returned, whatever you want to call it, back to the account that the Housing Authority manages. It's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars roughly.
Okay, so you have a clear accounting of what that number is at this point?
Yes.
You don't have to tell us the numbers tonight, but you have an accounting of it somewhere.
Yes, and as I say, it's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, right?
Yes, I believe the town holds those budgets. We don't.
Right, we do the accounting, the town, but we're not keeping the money.
And at the moment, it's just sitting there without any designated purpose unless something comes up?
That's correct. As, we could, the Housing Authority could originate something with regard to it, but also other parties, as in the case of HESH, can originate a request and bring it to the Housing Authority.
Got it, thank you. Janelle.
Peter, is ninety-three, ninety-seven the former Hetch property?
I think it is, yeah. I think it is.
So the town was slated to buy that at one point? Is that what I'm hearing? And then it fell through, and now it's for sale by Peterson?
Bob, why don't you give us clarification for that?
No, there was, HESH owns the property, as far as I know, they still own the property, which is, however, appears to be for sale, based on the for-sale signs out on Route 28, the two lots. And their offices were in part of that property, one of the houses that was on the property. They made a proposal, they brought forth a proposal to develop affordable housing on that property, and went through the process of putting a funding package together, coming to CPC, coming to the Housing Authority, coming to the town, looking for funds as part of their funding package. Eventually, though, the project fell through, and the, all of those funds were returned to the various places from which they were originally appropriated. That was, so that was a HESH-originated affordable housing project.
What's the demolition that Brooks was speaking about?
He's speaking about the fact that one of the houses on the property is an old house that old enough to require going through the demolition permit process in the town.
Okay.
But Hetch does own the property, and they're trying, disposition, I guess, is the way I would describe it at this point in time. On that topic?
Yes, just another quick question. I think it, perhaps it was referenced, on looking at a document from the state in regard to production plans, those towns with certified productions plans, Harwich was listed as expired as of May 2015. And I don't know if that means, if there was some discussion about a production plan, or I'm not sure if that's what's being referred to, but I believe that should be probably updated. And I just want a clarification of what the status of the Harwich production plan is for housing. Thank you.
It's a town plan.
Yeah, I think it is a town plan.
That's a, that's a town plan. That's not a Housing Authority plan, to my knowledge. It's not a...
It's produced by the Housing Committee and the Housing Board.
Right, but it's a town plan.
But it's a tax.
Right, but I think that, it really goes through our planning board.
Yeah, Chris, would you check with the town planner and the planning board on the status of that, please?
Just to clarify, I don't think it's produced by the planning board. It's produced by the Housing Committee.
Well, that's all right. We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out. Yeah, thank you. And thank you for your report. Bob will call on you again for Community Preservation Act, or Community Preservation Committee, I should say.
I guess that was a way to kind of dovetail from one to the other, because that particular article crosses the boundaries. And actually, I'll take the opportunity, the various non-state programs that the Housing Authority has been involved with, essentially, I can't guarantee historically, but essentially, all of them have originated with CPC-funded articles. That's where the Housing Authority doesn't really have funding of its own, that the budgets that are put together, the state budgets that are put together for the Housing Authority projects, fund those projects with a little, with some admin. But there's not really a source of funding as such for the Housing Authority. So these programs are really funded by other funds. CPC, Community Preservation Committee. I do want to read, as I have in the past, but I will read it again, because we, hopefully, we have new listeners every six months or whenever these opportunities come up. So I want to read the first paragraph again, introducing people to the program. Harwich adopted the Community Preservation Act, modified to accommodate the replacement of the so-called land bank, effective beginning July 1, 2005. The Act establishes a three percent property tax surcharge supplemented by the state by an amount depending on other funds raised by the state. The Act requires the establishment of committee, the Community Preservation Committee, to study and recommend to the Board of Selectmen and the town, projects to be funded from these resources. The committee is comprised of nine members, two selectmen appointees, and representatives from the Housing Committee, Housing Authority, Recreation, the Historical Commission, Open Space and Real Estate, Conservation, and the Planning Board. Throughout the year, the committee, which normally meets monthly, but more frequently in November and December, to review applications. We've just started review of applications currently. There is, while there's been generally good attendance, we have had quite a bit of turnover this past year. I think I was actually noting that between the time I submitted the report and tonight, I think we've had three new members, something like that. This happens whenever, by having particularly the appointees from the committees, that they can choose to change their, essentially to change their, the person that they want to represent them, to an extent when either something comes up or they choose to. The, I do want to take the opportunity to thank David Purdy, Jan Bowers, and Peter DeBacher for their past service and contributions to the process. These were three people that participated during the past year. For fiscal 2016, CPC made recommendations to the May 2015 annual town meeting of four projects, amounting to nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Those articles were all approved by town meeting. Twenty-five thousand dollars for historic preservation, three hundred thousand dollars for community housing, that's the article that John Stewart mentioned earlier, and six hundred and fifty thousand dollars related to an open space purchase. The town also approved paying debt service for six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars with regard to the land bank purchases that we are still paying the debt service on for the next approximately six years. This year, the committee has begun considering fifteen applications for the current round of project funding. These applications, as they stand, cover all four categories, including recreation, which are permitted by the Act, and likely represent greater than three million dollars in requests. I say likely because one of them is an open, is a land purchase application and has not had a value attached to it. To provide perspective on our position this fall, there was approximately 1.3 million dollars available after last town meeting's article appropriations. The initial estimate of revenue being distributed this fall is approximately 1.6 million dollars, based entirely on the previous year, for a total of approximately 2.9 million dollars in available funds. I do expect to hear from the state probably in the next two weeks on the distribution from state funds. The rumor that I heard was that the first tier distribution was down to about eighteen percent. Now, this has started at a hundred percent up to about four years ago. We do benefit by being a three percent surcharge. We benefit by participating in the second and tertiary tiers of funding, but that's how bad it is currently. With the requirement to fund the land bank debt service of approximately 630,000 dollars, the amount of funds available for projects in all areas permitted by the CPA is approximately 2.2 million dollars. Thus, the review of applications begins with less funds available than the total of the funds request. That's what, I think, where we are right now. And I do want to mention that this, these numbers are all based upon a spreadsheet that the committee keeps, which I have submitted to the town to try and ask for their confirmation that these are consistent values with what the town has. That confirmation is still pending at this time. The Act does require that ten percent of the receipts be allocated to open space, historical preservation, and community housing, regardless of the distribution of funding applications. And that's part of, part of one of the articles that you'll see at town meeting on an annual basis, is to do that ten percent allocation. The, as I think I've mentioned previously, we are currently, there actually is a RFP out. We've made the progress far enough to have an RFP out in the public for community preservation planners to respond to, to get a community preservation plan started, work on, which was funded with an article this past year. Thank you very much.
Bob, can I just ask, the fifteen applications, when do you expect, calendar-wise, to get through the decision-making process of that?
Recently, we've been able to get done with, through to voting before Christmas.
Okay.
Now that, I will say that now that this, the timing has been, this town's timing for articles has been slightly, created a little more flexibility, but we would still hope to be able to process through before Christmas.
Okay, thank you. Questions on the board?
Yeah, I just have a question about the ten percent. You have three categories for the ten percent, the open space, historical preservation, and community housing. Ten percent total for those three, or each ten percent?
Each ten percent. The one that isn't mentioned, which is Recreation, does not get an automatic ten percent under the Act. The other three, if we get, if the total funding from, from the state is a million and a half dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars automatically goes into each fund.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anybody else? Angela?
Just a clarification. We had a comment earlier this evening about looking at purchasing some land in East Harwich. I think, based on the comments, this year's requests of the CPC are completed.
That's right.
And what we would be doing is moving for a year from next Monday, next May, rather. So I just didn't want anybody to go out here thinking...
Or you borrow the money.
Or, yeah, but...
I mean...
But that's probably not going to happen.
We'll have that discussion when it comes back.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have the good work.
Brooks.
Huh? Oh, Brooke, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
I just wanted to indicate, on the CPC, as part of the CPC applications this year, the Captain's Row applicants mentioned in 2008 report, and that was developed as part of CPC. So the information that's developed in these funding programs, I think, should be made available to the townspeople. It has tremendous value. And just getting to ninety-three, ninety-seven again, I think there may have been reports, it's done as part of that work that was paid for by the town, that I believe there should be an effort made to get that information, because to find, again, a solution to that location, those assumptions should be understood. And I think, I don't know if Mr. Lamonti was making reference to West Harwich, it wasn't buying land. The notion was...
No, no, he's talking about something else. He's talking about something else. He came earlier tonight.
Right, okay. But again, that, just to clarify, that Infrastructure Fund is not something that applies, that's available now. But then, the 208 report, which was very valuable in terms of assisting, in terms of people understanding different things, that was made, that was made available. And I think having more of that information from the different proposals, especially if they don't go for it, would be very helpful for the towns' benefit in having that.
Are you saying the information's not available, or hasn't been made available?
Well, the only information I've seen on ninety-three, ninety-seven was the site plans that were produced as part of the process, but none of the backup, except for the initial application that was made to the selectmen and then the CPC. That's all I've seen. But there must have been, you know, assumptions for, you know, treatment of waste and so forth onsite, and other things which could be helpful in terms of looking at different options for that location. And so I would say that since the town, through the CPC, paid for some of those things, that if there were engineers hired and, you know, pre-development monies were expended, there should be information returned.
Well, I would assume that any of that documentation would be available to the public. It's just a question, what is the documentation? Chris, I don't know if you have any knowledge of this or not.
I don't know off the top of my head. We can look at it and see what's out there.
Brooke, maybe what you want to do is come in at some point in time and sit down with Chris and just explain what it is you're looking for, and then he can get staff to, you know, try and crunch through it and find it. Somebody else has a magic ball? Christopher Ball? Linda?
I don't think the town actually has that documentation. I mean, the town provides funding for another organization to do this work. I mean, the town provides funding for another organization to do this work, but that's not our, those aren't our reports, if I'm correct on that. You know, HESH would have, for example, had any engineering reports, but is there an obligation for them to turn them over to us?
I don't believe so, and I think you're exactly right when a, if we deal with a third party that, that in fact the funds have been provided to them as part of their, their funding package, and to the extent that they've been spent, that at least at the current time, that is what, that is the, whether it's this project or any other project that's, or that's done in that fashion, that work is in the hands of the, the people that did the funding, did the application.
Let's just, let's just get clear and clarify who has what, what was paid for, how, and those kinds of things.
Obviously, whatever is private is private, and we will not be able to obtain. If it's public and we're able to obtain it, we certainly will try to obtain.
I'll sort it out. Okay, thank you.
Those were HESH projects.
Thank you.
And they are private projects.
Gary, Zoning Board of Appeals. How are you, sir?
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
I made it.
You made it?
Yeah, Mr. Burke was going through, filling in for me, but I made it in. I do believe you have our.
We do.
Agenda. If you'd like, I can go through it as far as the amount of cases we heard. So, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Gary Carrero, the chair. The board heard 27 special permits last year. All 27 were granted. We had seven variances, all seven were granted. We had no 40B come before us. Motions to withdraw without prejudice, we had seven. Motion to dismiss, we had none, and matter of rate, we had none. I think one of the biggest challenges we had in previous years was having a full board, which today we do. We have five full members, which is myself as the chair. Mr. Burke is here this evening as our clerk. We have Dave Ryer, Dean Henderson, and Franco Prevert as our regular members. As our alternates, we have Joe Campbell, and our two newest members, Kathleen Muller and Paul Doan. So, actually, that's our biggest struggle as we have right now. We have anything else to report to you, unless you have a question you'd like to ask?
Sounds like the problem solved, as far as.
That really was it. That was the biggest issue we had, yeah. And I mean, I'm very proud of the board we have. They're great people and put a lot of effort into it, so.
Good, okay.
I've got a quick question.
Yep, Janelle.
Why is this signed by Shayla, if she's not part of the board?
Shayla's our secretary.
So she has a whole separate position? She's not part of the board?
No, she's just, she's not our board secretary.
She's not a board member.
She has a position in the building department.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
She does an excellent job, too, so.
So Gary dictated this to her, and she put it in, and she typed it up.
Absolutely not. She ran with this, so.
I think what she did was she gathered the facts.
She did, she gathered the facts.
And she presented it to you, and you said that's exactly what I want to say.
Looks good to me, pretty much.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, keep out the good work.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. All right, next, we'll move on to old business. It was two weeks ago, we had, was it Barry? Was it two weeks ago, Barry? And Maggie, you were in, was it two weeks or last week? Two weeks ago?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago, and we started a discussion.
No, let's try it here. Thank you.
We started a discussion about the. We started a discussion, what I believe is proposed as the sixth amended intergovernmental agreement, we're talking about the Cape Light Compact. And I'd like to, we had, as part of the discussion, Maggie and you, Barry, identified the items that were being proposed to be changed in the document. And then there was an additional discussion about authority to move forward the changes, i.e., do we just tell you it's okay, you know, should this board be voting, it's okay, you know, those kinds of things. So to handle this discussion, what I would like to do is talk about two things separately. One is the document itself. So let's get, let's get the comments on the document itself organized and discussed or whatever. And then after we're done with that, we'll move on to the question of, you know, who approves it, who signs it, blah, 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 okay? The legal, the legal responsibility for doing that. So with that, you have a marked-up version, I believe, of the sixth amended, proposed amendment in front of us. You also have, I think, a clean copy of what it reads like when we're all done. I view it, and there was also a document, document in here, I think, maybe Barry, you provided it, that said there's really two, two sections of focus. One is, one is cleaning up things clerically, basically, and the other one has to do with, basically, position description or identification of the duties of Maggie Downey's position, which took up, you know, most of the changes in the document.
That's the major change.
Yeah. And I also know that, you know, we took, we took this and sent it to council just to take a look at it again. And Chris, I know in the document itself, there was one concern or comment, maybe there were more, but I know of one that council raised, and would you share that with us, please?
Sure, just on the specifics of the content of the Amendment Number Six, actually, this was done by Coleman and Page. I just got this on Friday afternoon. That's why it wasn't immediately in the package. He had a concern, the attorney was Rick Holland, and he said that the compact administrator, under the language, has other such powers and duties as customarily belonging to a manager of municipal light plant, or major regional intergovernmental association, or as may be designated from time to time by the governing body. And he suggests that this last sentence is really a very broad-based authority to confer, and that he suggested that this be deleted, that it's probably too broad. A general municipal light plant board has very broad authority. So he's saying that he believes that this is somewhat inconsistent with the Cape Light Compact Agreement, to have so much authority vested in, in one person, and the way it was, more so by the way it was referenced by the manager of the municipal light plant.
So the comment, if I understand it right, Mary, just so you're clear, under Section K, which is the new Section K called Contract, Compact Administrator?
Yes.
I think what you, you just said, Chris, is that council recommends the last sentence in that.
Correct.
That section, which starts out, I'll just read it, "The compact administrator also shall have other, other powers and duties as customarily, as customarily belong to a manager of municipal light plant, or a major regional intergovernmental association, or as may be designated from time to time by the governing board." The recommendation is that that be eliminated, because it's too broad.
Eliminate the sentence altogether?
Eliminate that sentence. That's the recommendation of our council.
It's page 14, if you're hunting for it.
On the clean copy?
I'm looking at the marked-up copy.
My marked-up copy, it's page 12, so.
I'm looking at 14.
Yeah.
Okay, but it is the last sentence.
I got page 12.
Yeah, okay.
I was just there, and the computer decided to take it away from me.
Yeah, let's just make sure we get it right.
It's green 12.
And be there.
By the way, one of the things we have to have, I think, is the sixth version and one is the fifth, maybe, so that can be some confusion. Okay, you understand it?
Personally, we don't, Scott and I don't see that as a problem that makes sense. I will bring it back to the governing board, which is going to meet on November, I think it's the 12th. Their intention are to hear comments and hopefully, hopefully approve it. We'll pass that on at that point. I can't tell you.
Okay, as long as you understand what the comment is, that's okay. That's number one. Other comments on the content of the document, I guess, is the question. Linda?
Can we make sure that we say, instead of chairman, we say chair? Vice chairman, vice chair?
Yep.
It's a pet peeve.
It is a pet peeve.
Thank you, Janelle, I see a thumbs up, yes.
Hi.
Please make the document gender neutral, how's that?
Thank you.
Is that the better way to state it? Okay, other comments? Michael?
Yes. Can I just, for clarification, who voted the original document in 1999?
Who voted the, who voted the original document?
Yes.
First, the Board of Selectmen, and then town meeting.
Okay. Now, if I'm correct, this has been changed five times, now six times.
That's correct.
Who voted the five changes? You as the, all the appointees, the 21 appointees, or 23 appointees?
As the appointee, I have the authority to do that. Without, do not have to go to town meeting with it. Really, did not require the Board of, this document doesn't require the Board of Selectmen approval, but in each case, that was, that's the practice that we, that we use.
Okay. So, things like dropping the line on the bottom of page one, "Compact in order to negotiate the best rates for the supply and distribution of electricity." Now, if it's, my understanding is, the original reason the Cape Light Compact was formed was to provide better rates. Why would we want to drop that line? It seems like we're losing the language that you want to.
Where are we?
Right here, on the bottom. In order to negotiate the best rates for supply.
Scott Ridley, I'm a consultant of the compact, in addition to being a Harwich resident. And I took part in the original drafting of this document almost 20 years ago now. And I can tell you that that isn't, that wasn't the sole purpose for the formation of the compact. As a matter of fact, the real impetus for the compact had more to do with energy efficiency. And as the chairman may recall, back in 1995, 1996, Barnstable County put together an energy efficiency plan, and what was conceived at that time is that there's going to be difficulty in implementing what the county and what the towns wanted to do here on the Cape with that energy efficiency plan. And formation of the compact was seen as a way to carry out that plan. There was a requirement on the part of the state that the compact have a power supply program in order to do energy efficiency. The evolution of the power supply market over time has gone to a recognition that you really need to get the best terms and not just always the best rates, because sometimes you get good rates, but the terms of that contract aren't the best terms. You don't have certain kinds of guarantees, there's more risks that are involved. And so therefore, it was transferred to, say, the best rates, which takes into consideration prices, but also other risk factors as well.
So, I think, and you mentioned sole purpose. I think.
Yeah, that was not the sole purpose. If you look here, there are dozen purposes of the compact that are outlined here. Those are the original dozen purposes.
In this agreement or the original agreement?
In this agreement. The dozen purposes, the original purposes are still here.
Okay, so from 1999, the original purposes part of this has not changed?
It has not changed.
Okay. So, being the default supplier, for electric, for, to be the default, you have the most amount of customers, you're automatically defaulted to, to the supplier. Why are we continuously, it says in another paragraph, "Best terms and conditions," which you just mentioned?
Right.
Being the default, I would think that that would be a negotiation tool to get the best rates, and what's the difference between terms and conditions and rates? Could you explain to me what terms and conditions would supersede negotiating contract every two years, and why rate is not as important as terms and condition?
Or, excuse me, just try this one. Try cents per kilowatt hour, why that isn't the sole number that you're focusing on. Is it?
Yeah, why the terms and conditions would be more important than the rate.
That's what he's asking.
Part of what you're looking for is certain kinds of guarantees in the contract, that the power provider will back up, and those types of guarantees aren't offered in all contracts, and so you need those guarantees.
Okay. I imagine if I ask, I can get, for instance, in the actual.
Absolutely, yeah. We can get to a much more in-depth conversation on that, sure.
If I also understand, Scott, when Maggie was here last time, and I think you were here as well, she did mention terms like length of time. So, for instance, even like with a cell phone contract, you can go out and get a very favorable short-term rate, but then when you get to the end of that timing, whether it's three months, or, you know, 120 days, or whatever it is, that then you have to renegotiate, or it's a new rate that comes in, and oftentimes, that can be unfavorable.
That's right. And also, the N-Star, EverSource contracts were seen as the benchmark for the compact, and EverSource went to a six-month rate, therefore, the compact had to flip to a six-month rate so that it'd be comparable rates that could be, that would be compared.
And is it, is it possible that sometimes the timing of these, these rates overlap so that, you know, if your rate ends today, somebody else's rate may have ended 30 days ago?
That's correct.
So it's kind of hard, I think it's kind of hard for consumers to figure it out, quite frankly.
Yeah, it is. It's very hard. And that's one of the purposes of the compact. It's very difficult for people to look at individual contracts or to get phone calls and try and decide whether that's a good deal or not.
Yeah, and I think as it was made clear last time Maggie was here, the compact is the default supplier, unless someone picks up the phone, calls somebody and says, "I want to get it from Fred," or whatever.
That's correct.
So, they have to initiate an action, otherwise they automatically fall into the compact situation.
And the, one of the advantages of the compact, too, is that there, people are free to come and go from the compact, whereas some of those contracts they get involved in, they have certain kind of penalty fees that they have to pay if they exit that contract.
I understand. Chris, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, over the years, doing some of these contracts, I've seen where you have minimums and maximums, and if you don't stay within a certain range, then you have penalties. So there are different elements that can really be kind of, you know, things that catch you, that if you don't, you know, very careful.
You mean minimum, max on usage, or?
How much you consume, yeah.
Like on a monthly basis? You use over 1,000 kilowatt hours or something, you flop into some other.
If you go into a higher rate that they weren't expecting, then they have cert, you know, surcharges or whatever they call them.
Could I just ask, Scott, just for the public's information, maybe ours, too, has other competitors offered rates, if you will? You guys ever put together a little spreadsheet that compares your rate with everybody else's rate, or whatever else is being offered?
Yeah, things are changing on a constant basis, and what people are being offered over the phone sometimes is not accurate. I take calls from people just so I can understand what's being offered, and I play the usual consumer, and I ask the kinds of questions that I believe consumers would ask. And oftentimes, the person that's doing the calling apparently hasn't been properly trained, because the kinds of discounts that they're, they're touting, you know, aren't there. And I ask them for written documents, and they say they can't provide written documents, but I can go to their website, I ask them for which contract, I look at that contract, and it's very different from the terms that are being offered on the phone. So people, what the compact has is a list of cautions for people, of what the kinds of things that they should ask, and the kinds of things that they should beware of. This is a buyer beware market for people, you know, getting phone calls, having someone come to their door. I had one friend who, his wife made an agreement with her hairdresser, because there's a certain marketer out there that enlists a lot of people, sort of like a Tupperware kind of situation, where they just have a whole chain of people that they enlist to be sellers. And she came home and said that she had gotten a great rate on power from her hairdresser, and he found out what the rate was, and the compact's rate, which they were on, was about to go down again, and they would be, they're going to end up paying more. And so people just have to be, have to be careful.
Can I just follow up on that a bit? If someone gets approached by some other entity to provide them with something, can they call the compact and talk to someone who would be knowledgeable, help them sort that out, I guess?
Yes. The power supply planner is the person they can talk to.
Okay, so they just call the main number at Cape Light Compact and ask for the.
The power supply planner.
Power supply planner?
Right.
Okay, that's good information. Mike?
So I guess, to add to the compact administrator job description, you know, that one line was brought up on the bottom about the, being a manager of municipal light plant. There's several, there's several things in that description that gives her, Maggie, ultimate power. She doesn't have to go back to your board, she doesn't have to, she can make, shouldn't some of this be signed by the chair, or, I mean, isn't this giving one person an awful lot of power? I guess that's my first question. Second question is, you know, for the, for this board is, this is a legal document, it was voted on by, by the Board of Selectmen in 1999. It was voted at town meeting, and now, and no reflection on you, Barry, I think you've done a wonderful job. 21 different appointed people, and Barry just said it himself, he can bring back whatever we want. If they want to change it, they're going to change it anyway. Is that, you know, in our legal opinion that we got from, from Giorgio's office?
It has to be a vote of the 23, of the 23 members. One member from each town and one for each of the, each of the counties. Martha, Martha Vineyard, six towns, Cape, the Cape, 15 towns and then two counties. That's, that's what makes the difference, and they're weighted votes.
50 percent.
I'm sorry?
Weighted vote, then. Weighted vote.
They are weighted votes, yes.
Majority rules on weighted vote, right?
Over 50 percent, right.
You just need, you just need the majority, 50 percent of the weighted vote, right?
Yes.
It's not a supermajority or anything?
No.
Okay.
I'll email you, Barry, my follow-up questions, maybe you can come back to the board with some of, the supplier rate, it's not the energy efficiency. I have some questions in regards to the supplier rate, and we've had the same.
You want to do that offline someplace?
I'll send you an email, and then maybe have you come back before the board.
Absolutely.
We've had the same supplier in town for more than two-thirds of the time, and going And going back to the default rate, I find it hard to believe nobody else wants to compete with the terms and conditions or the rates.
Many times very difficult to get other people to decide they want to commit. There's, there are so many things they have to adhere to to make sure they, that, the, the biggest thing is, is that to assure the power supply. It's nice and easy to say that Joe Jones is going to provide power to all Cape Cod for two weeks. When you, when you try to tie into six months or a year and 200,000 customers or 140,000, whatever, it, that's not quite as easy to get people to, to agree to that.
You need an organization that has the ability to hedge so that they're buying fuel contracts, which are going to back up that power supply in case one of the plants go down, they have other reserves, so it's, it's quite complicated.
Quite a chunk of business, though.
It is.
You would think that it's more than one that would compete in that market.
It's also risk on their side based on, you know, what the, the fuel mix is, if you will, or generation mix is, and then, as you say, things going down, et cetera, et cetera. The other thing I would, I'd just comment is, you, we might think it's a big number to a lot of these guys, it's, it's like a little village, you know?
Forty percent of the time, we're, we're high, we're, we're at a higher rate than NSTAR and 60%, and the other way around. It's very, very, it's usually very, very close.
Okay, so other comments on the document itself? Okay, Barry, would you refresh my memory as to?
We have those two, we, we will either change or look to get changed, right?
Okay, but would, would you refresh our memory as to when the, when your board's going to take this up?
I didn't hear that.
When your board, when the, when the Compact board is going to take this up? Is it the 12th or something like that?
It's the 18th.
18th of November?
Number 18th, yeah.
Right. Yes. What, whatever the second Wednesday would be. That's can't be the 18th.
The first mention was the 12th, when you mentioned it a little while ago.
That's it. That's, that's, that's the date, yes.
Okay.
Because this Wednesday, which would be the fourth, fifth?
Fourth.
Fourth is the first Wednesday, so the second would be the 11th, actually, right?
Which is a holiday, which is a holiday.
Oh, so you're meeting on the 12th?
Yes, that's correct.
What time and where is that meeting?
Held at the Consp, Conspel Courthouse, not, not more, up on the, up on the top of the hill now, the new, new building. It'll be at 2:00 in the afternoon, and certainly you're welcome to attend.
Okay. Any other comments on the document itself? Okay, Chris, now could I just ask what the latest legal opinion on the, I'll just call it the authorization to sign the document, I guess that would?
Yeah, I, I think that, um.
And by the way, I think that all just got, that, that opinion just showed up at our drop boxes, I think, this morning sometime.
It was this afternoon.
So I don't know if we all had a chance to read it or not.
But just to be clear, we had virtually the same opinion in March of 2013 from when Jim Miriam presented it in a, one of his town administrator, administrator reports. So, some of us knew that.
Yeah, I'm just asking for the clarification of what was sent in today?
Yep.
Because I'm not sure all of us, and I know I didn't, so I was tied up all day, got a chance to go through it, so.
The summary of it, which was a summary of the 13 opinion, was that basically as this thing evolves over time and that there, as amendments allow for the limitation where the, the authority goes to the voting representative, that that has occurred over time. So, he said, you know, that's the way the agreement has evolved and that's what, it's the way it has, it works currently. He said that he did put in that opinion, subject to the limitation, that if such amendment material affected the liability or financial responsibility of a municipality under the agreement, the amendment should be submitted to the Board of Selectmen for a vote. So there was a caveat that if there was a substantial change, that that had to come back to the, to the selectmen. Again, that was our attorney's opinion. I did ask kind of further, kind of hopefully reading the board a little bit, that, okay, if we're in a situation where the board may not, this board may not agree with previous board decisions that gave that authority or delegated that authority to an individual, what can be done? And the recommendation that, that he makes here is either the town may propose a separate amendment to the agreement in order to change the provision, allowing, allowing the governing body to amend the agreement without the need for a vote of a Board of Selectmen. So basically, make a recommendation that to return to a vote of the selectmen. Or the selectmen may simply direct its representative not to agree with any of the amendments without first obtaining a vote of the board, notwithstanding the language of the agreement. So, he kind of gives two roadmaps going forward if the board does not agree with how things have evolved over, over time in the agreement.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah, I think for the record, you know, this was an important enough document for the board to vote on in 1999 and for town, and for it to be brought to town meeting and voted on, yet there's been five revisions to the contract. And now we're being asked to revise, or look at revisions again, without any real detail to what's happened since 1999. So, we have no idea really what, what changes have been made in this document. And I, I don't see how you can have a legal document that you can have an appointed person make the, or 23 appointed people make the changes for the town when it's a legal document. And I think, you know, our counsel mentions it in the first three line. He reviewed the agreement with the understanding that you seek our comments on the proposed revisions as opposed to the entire agreement. This is a legal document, and what constitutes a major change? I think a major change would certainly be the job description that you're asking for for Maggie. That seems like a major change to me. I mean, she's, she's able to act in that, in that, in that job description with some pretty major decisions without your board's approval or signature.
Linda?
For the record.
Yeah, that's fine. Linda?
And I, and I, I'm just going to comment that I think we need to separate the changes that are being proposed from whether or not we like the way the process works.
That's what we did.
Because the way, because the way the process works, that town meeting voted, was that the Board of Selectmen would appoint a representative, we've been fortunate to have the same representative for a while, and that representative would be authorized to then vote as the governing body of the Cape Light Compact. So whether we like that or not is really separate from the rest of these issues. I mean, I hear what you're saying, Michael, but, but it really is separate. And we've had other arrangements where somebody, I mean, the, the Transit Authority, we authorize someone to go to the Transit Authority as our representative in Harwich, but we don't tell them, we can't tell them how to vote. We can ask them to vote some way, but they don't have to bring stuff back to us, and that's also been a longstanding document.
Okay, so, so I think we did separate the two. At least I thought it was clear in trying to do that. Could be some overlap, but we have now entertained the questions or comments on the document itself, and now we're talking about the process, okay? I will mention that even if this board decided to do something else or take some other action other than saying, Barry, go, you know, go vote for us, it's very likely the other, however many entities that voted in this thing are going to do it anyhow, and it's going to get passed. I'm thinking that. I think that if we have an interest in trying to change this in the future so that maybe any changes have to come back to a Board of Selectmen and be approved and then authorized the representative to act for us, that that maybe one approach there is to write the Compact a letter from the Board of Selectmen stating that's our desire for them to consider that moving forward. And we could also send it to all the other folks that are on this list that have representatives as well. At least that would get us on notice that we'd like to move in that direction in the future and see what the response is. Any thoughts on that?
Sounds like a way to handle it.
Michael?
I would say that I agree with Linda's summation of what we're talking about, but I would think that, as Peter just mentioned, maybe it's time this board revisits the fact that we're giving an appointed person authority on, on our behalf to, to make such major changes to a document. And, and our legal counsel did a very quick review of a very pointed question, and I, I think that this document is worthy of further review.
Linda? And I'll get to you, Angel, in a second.
I would concur with what you said, Peter, that if the board would like to send a letter requesting this issue to be discussed at the Compact level, and perhaps that kind of a change made, maybe defining what is a major change versus a minor change, what is the voting, because I think that to ask the Compact that they have to vote unanimously to do something. But some, but having, if we wanted to develop some type of letter that said we'd like to have this or that and, you know, majority vote or, or whatever, that, that would not be out of the realm of a possible outcome here.
For future actions.
Angela?
I, I think there's also another option. The subject can be brought up at the Selectmen and Counselors' monthly meeting.
Which is another one.
And to understand where the other boards of selectmen are, where we can propose what the issues are, we feel the issues are, and they may want to join us or not.
So, okay, so one approach tonight, I'm just making this up, folks, with a small, we gave you our comments on the document itself, okay? I think you've got enough ammunition in that regard to go back to your meeting on the 12th and make our comments known, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then I guess the question from this board, whether or not they want to, in addition, write a letter to the Compact?
For future actions.
For, yeah, future actions, that say that whenever this document or any document like this is revised, and I'll just call it a significant way, and I think if you're adding a section, that's a significant way, whether the section's titled whatever, okay? In this case, it happens to be the Compact Administrator, but, you know, I, I agree, this is a very significant change. Editorial stuff and housekeeping vastly different, okay? But just whether or not this board wants to send such a letter saying that in the future, we'd like the Compact, let's initiate the action there, and its members, to consider when significant changes are proposed on this or any other document related to the Compact, that be brought back to wherever the, the appointing authority is, which in our case would be the Board of Selectmen, to vote on it, to then pass it along or authorize the, the representative to act on their behalf. Is that something we're interested in?
I am.
So, is that somebody's motion, or?
Makes sense to me.
Well, before a motion?
Okay, Glenn.
One thing is, thank you, Barry, for bringing this to us so that we knew what these changes were going to be. I mean, I think I speak for all of us that we appreciate the upfront knowledge and the discussion.
Well, I think, quite frankly, he's always.
Very much. I know you wouldn't do it any other way.
I think he's always brought these changes to us whenever it's been a change.
But I, but I just want to say thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah.
I'd also ask the Subcommittee, Interview Subcommittee, to take a cruise through any other of the appointments that we have to county or regional whatevers and see what else, if this is an issue with other ones, like the, the regional transit. Because I think that it's probably not just an incident, I think it's others. So I would request that you guys take a look at that. To that venue, I would say, I'd make a motion that we write a letter to the Compact outlining some of our issues and requests for changes and adjustments.
In the approval process?
The approval process.
Second.
Okay, move the second to send that letter or craft it and send it to Cape Light Compact Discussion. Three now, and put it to a vote. All's in fair, say aye?
Aye.
Close. It's a vote, thank you. So, I just say.
Let's take a stab at drafting something and have it for the board to sign.
Yeah, bring back a draft, yeah. Yeah, we need to at least review that before we all.
Yeah, we need to review it before anybody signs it, yes.
And Barry, just, just for, just for the meeting on November 12th, we did have that one question that was asked, and Chris, or that we had the legal opinion on. The second thing I would ask you to bring back to the board is concern about Maggie's job description being so broad without, without the board weighing in or signing off, the Chair of the Board signing off. But her broad, job description is, is a little troubling for me.
Just, Charlene did look up, actually, it's November 18th at 2:00 is the meeting.
Oh, it is the 18th, okay.
Yeah, just so, I don't want to give bad information.
I have a slightly different issue.
The building at the top of the hill, where the old jail used to be.
But it's November 18th, not the 12th.
Angel?
I think one of the issues our lawyer brought up is very interesting, and that is the ability to change what's in that paragraph about Maggie's job description with no vote or by anybody. And that's not the kind of thing you, you put in a legal document. If we were voting, I would vote not to approve it unless that was changed. And I think that's a serious enough thing, so it doesn't, because it's just ridiculous. Because what it says is, in English, is that here's what we're saying she's doing, but we can change our mind when we, whenever we want to.
Yeah.
It doesn't work that way.
Actually, it does.
I know.
It does work that way.
It shouldn't work that way.
Well, shouldn't is different than does.
Okay. Is it clear what we're looking for?
Right.
Barry, you all set?
I'm sorry.
You're all set?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah. Scott, thank you for, for coming and supporting. Yeah, okay. Good. No new business, Town Administrator's Report. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have several things this evening. I'll try to get through them as quickly as possible. Just on the, the budget instructions, we have put together the budget instructions and were sent out. We are in the process of having the MUNIS material be updated so we can start to enter in. That went out last week, and the due date is just before the, the holiday, Wednesday, November 25th. I kind of kept things, kind of making sure people highlighted different changes that are, are going to go on. Also, just to talk about guidance on utilities, electricity, fuel, oil, natural gas. And then also, I did attach the, the Selectmen's budget message so that that would have a further elaboration. Just on the, on the budget front, we have in, in conversation with the, the Finance Director today, I just want to, we, we've had a, a pretty good year this past year in terms of free cash. As you've heard already, that there's been a lot of retirements at the state. We do not anticipate having free cash be certified, unfortunately, anytime soon, but we do have to go in with some kind of planning numbers to plan for. So, I am looking at, looking at that number being in the neighborhood of 2.5 million, which is significantly higher than it's been in past years. I think the first year I was here, it was 450,000. Last year, it was 1.3 million. So, at this stage, the, the thought process, as I develop the capital budget, would be to allocate approximately a million and a half towards the capital budget, have a half million, which unfortunately we have had to use in the last two years, for snow and unforeseen events. We have spent a decent amount of money. And then to have a half million towards building reserves. And if the number comes in north of that 2.5, it would be my intent to build reserves by the half million, keep the half million. If, if we get some snow that doesn't actually materialize one of these years, then we will add that additional to reserves. And if we go a little higher than the 1.5, dedicate that for capital with the idea of trying to diminish the number of debt exclusions and capital items that we have in the, in the warrant. So, I, on the, in the capital plan. So I at least wanted to let the board know, and until that gets certified, we can't use that number, but I do need to have some number for planning purposes.
Chris, on that, that topic of, I guess, revenues, I think recently that the Finance Director sent us, sent us a, an accounting, if you will, on the landfill solar?
Yes.
And the percentage or amount that was going to the, credited to the Water Department?
Yeah, that number.
Which I think we started the whole process, we assumed we were going to get all that money, and now, if anybody read that, sees a significant amount that gets credited to the Water Department.
I think it actually, in some ways, and I don't remember the numbers, the exact numbers off the top of my head, but they anticipate that we would be closer to 400, over 400,000. And with 100,000 going to the Water Department, that still leaves 300,000 that would be used for town purposes.
That's my point.
So because the number came in higher, it, it has kind of addressed the, the issue of not having to decrease the initial allocation.
But if my understanding is right, we still had the annual report that we were promised?
I believe they did send it to you and I.
The annual report?
I think it was in the material.
I don't remember seeing it, but.
A day or two af- a day or two after, yeah.
I did get that.
Did you get it?
That's right, I think you were on it too, Michael.
Yes.
So check your email, I have a.
Yeah, forward it to me, yeah, because that was one of the criteria for then coming back, but, yeah.
Okay, maybe it was just Michael, I know, yeah, you and I.
I saw the Finance Director's accounting that, you know, looked like we're going to get a certain number.
I was only on the first payment.
My point is, I want to make sure, because we held those numbers or used those numbers for, basically for employee races or, you know, contract negotiations, if you will.
Yes, we did.
And I want to make sure we're not in a hole, starting out with that.
Yeah, no, the full 300,000 has been allocated in the budget plan, so.
Right.
We are doing that to offset operation costs, labor costs.
Right, I just want to make sure we're actually getting the $300,000.
Yep.
Could we make sure, I mean, I just heard this, the CVEC report, and if there are reports that come in from outside agencies, legal opinions, they really need to be forwarded to all of the Board of Selectmen. And, and not, you know, lost in limbo, because if one person has it, that's really not appropriate. I mean, we should be all getting this information. So let's make sure that all people, you know, all five members are on these emails.
Yeah, it's a little bit.
It would be really appreciated.
When, when people send it in, sometimes they send it in just to two, so I need to be better about making sure that my staff gets it, so that way they can distribute it.
Well, you should be distributing it to us, not leaving it to the staff.
Absolutely, staff usually does a distribution for me, that's all, for the reason for the comment.
Angelo.
Question, you got to 2.5 million dollars, which means you have a list somewhere of what's contributed to that. So can we see a copy of that, I'm very curious.
Me too.
Yeah, I know I've, in quick review with Andy going through it, about a million of that was basically one time. A good, a good case in point is Echo Woods, in which it was a tax title property that someone developed, paid the back taxes on it, so that won't reoccur, but there was a fair amount of that that had that element in it.
Yeah, that would be good, Angelo, that's a good comment.
Just one, onlineers, it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, we'll, we'll group it together, because he has it, you know, pretty detailed.
Right, before somebody gets excited that a million became 2.5 million, and next year it's going to be 3.5 million, and we'll all get really excited about that, so that's a good.
Well, yeah, I would not, this is not a trend where it's going to continue to go up.
But in a couple weeks, the Finance Committee is going to come in here and visit with us, and talk about how we go forward with the whole process in 2016 for 2017. And I think at that point in time, Chris, the discussion, what we think free cash is going to be appropriate.
And how we got there.
And how we got there.
And how we got there, and then also, you know, we're going to, I think next week, the Capital Committees, Capital Committee comes in to get their report, I think, next week. And we rack up everything we're trying to, they're trying to get done in the coming year, whether or not we want to shift things around or whatever. You know, that kind of discussion, Michael.
Back to the CVEC, I did ask Liz Argo to send me that report. It is still, in my opinion, not complete, right, Chris, because we've only done the first payment through Andy, we haven't.
Yeah, actually, because they started in August, that they sent us, the, the payment schedule wasn't as, it, it didn't work out timing wise, so we have two payments that are actually going to be allocated for FY 16 instead of 15. They got, they got here after the June 30th deadline.
So it's going to show under that 300 that Peter's talking about. It is going to show under, but it is going to follow up in FY 16, correct?
Correct, we'll make it up in FY 16.
Well, but just to be clear, she was also talking about coming in and asking for this surcharge, or whatever you want to call it, so I think we have to be very clear on what the numbers are, that's why he asked for the annual report, so, let's see it. Okay, that's all I have, sorry.
That's okay, on, just, I know that on the schedule that we had, the preliminary meeting with the Selectmen and FinCom, now I know you had November 9th, and that was to discuss the Montomo budget. And I did have a discussion with the superintendent, he did block off to come in on the 9th. I didn't know whether, I think my understanding from talking to the chairman of the Finance Committee was, I thought their next meeting was November 12th. So I don't know if he was going to.
Finance Committee, Finance, I'll just give you that one, the Finance Committee is meeting, not this week, but next week, my understanding is.
Right.
And so I have sent to you, I believe, and I think Anne, in preparing the agenda, to put them on the agenda the following Monday, but in advance to give them a list of, here are the six, making up a thing, six topics we want to talk about at that point in time, and I put some of those topics in the email to you.
Yes, I saw that.
Those need to get passed on to the Finance Committee, at least the chairman, so that they discuss those at their meeting. Okay, so that they come prepared, you know, with where they stand.
And was the intent to have representatives from Montomo attend that or not?
It would be fine, I mean, I'm not sure where they are in the whole budget process, I mean, it seems to me, you know, we talked about the budget.
They're in a similar place that we are.
Huh?
They're in a similar place that we are, they're still developing.
Which means he isn't any further, I don't think, than, than what he had in September when he came to us. So I don't see that as happening, I just think this is a discussion of the process going forward with the, with the Finance Committee. For instance, you know, we have done things before, like meet all day on a Saturday, you know, in joint meetings. So we've done other things that say, you know, let's do, let's do Tuesday and Thursday nights during the week as joint meetings, that type of thing. And how do we prepare and do that going forward? I'd also like to get an opinion on where we and they think our taxpayers are going to get to a limit on how much they want to, how much they want to go out for, for debt exclusions in the coming year, and whether or not, maybe because of that, we want to shift some things out, I don't know. Just start of a discussion.
I would say, just from my standpoint, it seemed like when the Finance Committee and the Selectmen met together, do the budget presentations and having those televised, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback, that people thought that was a good process. And it saves both committees being out tonight, so.
I think it was great, just recognize, you know, we had, on our team, we have two new members, we haven't heard from them yet. And the Finance Committee has several new members, so I think jointly, we just talk about how to do it. And if we end up in the same place we were at last year, it's fine with me, but, you know, we just need to make sure it works for the majority of people, so we get good attendance.
I just, whereas the positive feedback, I just want to at least pass that on. The next item that I have is on the, the community development workflow, and I realize that I kind of had that blended into also the Albro House discussion.
Wait, how about the Status of West Harwich?
Oh, I'm sorry, the Status of West Harwich, I moved my agenda off my thing here. So, West Harwich, we have done a walking tour of the, that area. We walked from the Division Street to the Herring River. We took down, there's probably about 30 people that participated in that, took down emails from all the people that attended. And then I think it was last Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, in the afternoon, there was a workshop in which the VHB people brought in aerial photos of the street and kind of went through with the different concepts. So the feedback, I guess they called it a officially kind of a brainstorming session of how to, what that corridor could look like, in essence, kind of looking at some of the elements of, how do you match up with what the Town of Dennis already has scheduled to be done into the industrial, I don't want to call it industrial, into the commercial area? And then how do you transition that into the residential area? And how do you try to highlight and pay tribute to the Captain's Row concept that's being floated? So how do you make it a kind of a historic element as well to highlight that section of the community? So there was a lot of different comments that came out of that. What the consultant VHB is going to do is assimilate those comments, and then they'll be back to do a presentation to the board. Their, their final task in their contract that we had with them is to bring something back to the board. I think we're slated, or they mentioned, probably January, February is when they would bring something back.
And Walter included someone from the state DOT, or not?
Uh, no.
Okay, just, this is only VHB?
It was VHB, we did partner up with Town of Dennis, so the Town of Dennis' engineer has joined us for both. So obviously, they're, they're well in advance of where they're going, so they are, I think he said 75% design. So they're, they're on the verge of starting to do some of the improvements, not right at Division Street, but more in Dennisport.
And is their design based on this complete street concept?
It is.
It is, okay, so you're still talking bike lanes and sidewalks and?
Yeah, bike lanes within a commercial area are a little different than bike lanes within a residential area. So there is a differential, basically much smaller. In essence, obviously, it's a smaller footprint, and you don't have the, the width, you don't have the, the snow loading areas, the greenscape. So that all is taken into account by the complete streets in urban areas. I hate using the word urban area, but commercial area is probably a fairer term.
Look forward to hearing from you.
And then the, the next one is, and this process has been a, kind of a long time coming, but we finally, I think, have the final stages to the community development support staff, the workflow. And we have, I just included in the, in the materials, kind of how things would flow. You know, the key component is to do cross-training and make sure that when a customer comes to the window, that we have multiple people that are able to assist them. And quite honestly, to take advantage of some of the talents that we have, of the people that we currently have staffing. So that, we sent this workflow out, and the union has not had any issue with this. So I think we're coming to the final closeout stages to the community development, changes on the second floor. As part of that, there was a discussion that occurred when we were moving offices, and I was asked to bring this back, I did do a memo back in, in June 3rd of 2015, in which during that process, the town engineer approached me and said that he had an interest in moving into the first floor of Albro House. We did kind of vet through that, I asked Sheila House to comment as to whether she thought that was a viable use to go with her operation. As the board is aware, the second floor of that residential dwelling now has three tenants, Sheila, and then two private tenants that pay. And then this concept would be to move the engineer and the surveyor over to that facility, so it would become a professional building. And we did also further, and there's a layout to his design plans. I don't know necessarily for tonight, but you know, I'd like to have at least the board give some thought, maybe put on the agenda to have a discussion. I did ask Sean to do a update of what it would take to move the, the two agencies over there. And he did do kind of a pre and post with the numbers, and I do need to meet with him to get a, a final estimate. But I think the idea of doing that, what that would allow us to do is free up space on the second floor. We would take some of the space on the second floor and probably just make another meeting room or some workspace.
You mean second floor of this building?
Second floor of this building.
Just to be clear, not second floor of Albro House.
But I, I think that gives us some flexibility to do, to do that on this floor. And, you know, when you're talking about a community development department, there's always a lot of plans, where they roll out the plans. It, it is a little bit more space intensive, so having a bigger work area or flex space that can cover as meeting space or spaced for people to have individual one-on-one meetings with people that want to develop, I think does make a lot of sense.
So, so Chris, just, just looking at numbers, and I understand you haven't really sat down with Sean yet to go through these, but if I look at his numbers, prior to moving engineering over there, he'd be looking to spend about 44,500 dollars.
Yes.
So in my mind, that money doesn't exist at the moment, unless you know if somewhere it does exist.
Yeah, no, the only money that we would have is the, the rental income is being put into a special fund.
Understand.
So, but that's not close enough.
So this would have to wait, this would have to wait till at least the funding source identified at town meeting or something like that.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so we have time on this one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, just trying to understand, Michael.
I think I refer back to, Chris, that, that letter you wrote was June 3rd, that was for our June 8th meeting. Which I think at the time, the consensus of this board was to try and figure something else out, not necessarily put engineering and surveying over there. And if memory, if my memory is correct, Bob Cafarelli considered moving over there, I think, because of the reallocation of space upstairs. I don't think it was initially, I know, I know for me, it, it was an issue separating the, separating the employees. I don't think that the interest in Bob moving, correct me if I'm wrong, came up until his space was reduced by the reallocation of space.
Once we started doing the reorg is when he started thinking about it.
So, you know, and going back this week, because this was an agenda item, I pulled every article written on that building, questions that were asked by Linda in October 21st, the statement made by Peter in the June 8th meeting, that we needed to do a comprehensive plan of what's going to happen with the Albro House. So I think before we go any further, this board, I think we've, for years, based on my reading, not me, but my tour of it, need to really look at what we want to do with the Albro House before we start talking about spending 45, 50,000 dollars in space and moving department heads or departments, you know, into a, into a building that's not here. Even if that means we should relook at the move, sorry, Chris, relook at the move upstairs here to see if there's space. We did offer our room, the Selectmen's room, for a department. I know that didn't seem to work for you for engineering, surveying, but.
Believe it or not, it was actually smaller than what they have that they were moved into, so.
So, you know, but what about for finance, since that's not something that people walk in there? I mean, is there, is there, has there been a real plan done? And, and what about a plan to just go back to where we were? If that's going to make Bob and the surveyor happy? I wasn't part of the vote for the reorg upstairs. I've read as much as I can read on it, but based on Linda's 17 or so questions that she's asked on this, based on the article that, that seems to have been passed for 30,000 for windows, I'm not sure how much of the window work was done, based on the fact that we only sanded the, lightly sanded the building and painted it, which does not address any of the construction concerns.
Right.
We could certainly do the same sort of rehab on the inside, but until we start looking at the foundation, and, and I think more important, until we get the comprehensive plan that Peter mentioned, and this board take a position on what the long-term use of the Albro House is going to be, why would we even consider this?
Linda.
Well, I'm going to toss in another angle here, which is, we've already decided, we've thought about, and I think we have the wording for a non-binding ballot question on the middle school. So why would we spend a heap of money to move two people over someplace if the, if the town would prefer us to move Town Hall over there, sell these buildings, and do something different? So it seems like spending money on a very short term when we're going to have a non-binding ballot question. So that's another piece of that, Michael, I'd toss into your commentary.
Thank you.
Well, I think organization and numbers is important at this point in time, because there hasn't been a plan. Whatever is done there needs to get at some point fixed by somebody. So I think it's good to put a plan of what needs to get fixed, put together, so we understand what that number is. The timing is the other issue. You know, we've already said that they can't move over there, earliest to be after town meetings, there's got to be some funding source to do something, so. And by the way, at that point in time, there's also the ballot question, so, all good points, so, Michael?
Thinking of space, Chris, also something for us to consider is if we are considering moving files to the community center, considering moving employees into the Albro House, I think to Linda's point, does make an argument that we need more space. Do we want to operate two buildings, is there a financial plan that's been put together for, for cost? And then has this board talked about, or has it been talked about, whether or not we want to consider selling the Albro House? Is that, is that an option?
And this building, I mean, if we move, I mean, part of it is, if we move this building, which is X thousand square feet of space, but we continue operations in a three times, three or four time bigger space, that's three or four times more operating expense, where does that come from in the budget? So, I mean, I already saw the town administrators, you know, his budget message to the departments is, you know, putting in expanded services that potentially could be a 2.5 override, just somewhat contrary to what the Board of Selectmen's message was, but we'll sort that one out. But it's, all of this comes down to dollars and cents. And how mu- so, yes, we need an overall plan, not just the scatter shotgun approach?
Mr. Chairman, last year, we did get to, you know, a fairly lengthy discussion. I did present to the chairman at the time that in order to do a comprehensive review of Albro House to make it, you know, something that would be viable for the long term, that he felt it was beyond, he being, Sean Libby felt it was beyond his scope. And then if we were going to do a, a real good review of the house to have it last for, you know, 30 years, that it would be an outside consultant, and that was 12,000 dollars. We did go to the effort, obviously, staff has taken a tremendous amount of effort to try to, you know, present information to the board. And, you know, if, if the board is interested in looking at, you know, a solution to make sure that Albro House is functional for the foreseeable future, you know, at least what I was recommended to me is that, you know, the 12,000 dollars should be spent to make sure that it's brought up, whether that's, you know, something that's allocated in addition to, you know, the, the plan for the reuse. The other concept, and I haven't been in town that long, but, you know, the message I keep getting from the, you know, people at town meeting is that this town is, you know, not inclined to sell things, and to go through. is, you know, not inclined to sell things. And to go through the exercise and present things to town meeting to have it voted down and then come back with a reuse plan, I mean, we can go through the exercise and come back, but I just, you know, you guys have been here a lot longer than I have. I'm just listening to the comments that I hear, that it's tough to sell things in this community. And so I just, I throw that out, that, you know, instead of just leaving it lingering, it would be good to have some kind of decision made moving forward.
I think that, excuse me, I think that Sean's, between Sean and the town engineer is going to be as good as we get on advice over that building, or any building, quite frankly. And I'll reference, this isn't a negative, but you know, I look at what the library did with their consultant, and I think that was a debacle myself. I mean, it's just, you know, they hired the wrong person, whatever. They certainly got the wrong answer. They didn't ask the right question, I don't know, but it didn't, it didn't work out too well. I think that between Sean and the town engineer, they can figure out, they can figure out, at least ballpark what needs to be done, and I would trust, I would trust that at least as far as taking something forward to say, within ten percent, it's sort of this number. If somebody wanted to make an argument to say, okay, we want to go do this, we want to do that, at least you get something to compare it to with that number. So I would encourage that. And it's fine to bring that back here. The question is the timing of it all and what we do with it. It sounds like the guidance would be that until we figure out we're going to do it to middle school, you know, we might as well just put these two places in suspension other than whatever we do inside the building.
Well, I personally, you know, especially, I know in my, you know, evaluation, you know, my responsibility is to bring different concepts to the board. And we had that conversation on the Bank Street Harbor Master Shop, and the board made a decision to let's hold that until we get Sacquetucket Harbor done, just so I don't spin my wheels or have staff redo things over and over again. I mean, I would like to have the board, if that's the board's will to let's wait and see what the electorate says for middle school, it makes sense to me, then if we could have a vote that, let's see what happens with the middle school and see what happens with that plan. Because then at least we have an answer for the next two years, and I don't have to continue to have people search for additional information.
And quite frankly, if it's status quo, we're getting by with it now, so what's the problem, you know? So Angelo, you've been patient?
Yeah, I think one of the things we do have to work on is the potential need of changing the space in this building or getting more space. And I think it's above the middle school. It may, and what drives me to that is, if you look at some of the buildings that Chatham has built to be buildings that are used for municipal purposes, like a town hall, they really work. This building doesn't quite work because it used to be a bank, I guess, and, you know, we keep on sticking things onto it. The middle school was a school, and it was designed for school. Unless we can get, figure out how to get it to work, it, we may want to have a town hall, we may want to have it where the middle school is, but physically, a large part of that building would be harder to deal with than not. So I think we, we've got to look, what might be helpful for the next six months or a year is for you to take a look at what you would think you would need in a municipal building. What would you do? What would you add? So we can have another option. I mean, if everything you want can be done by adding twenty feet to the back of this building, and I just make that up, it's probably a lot less expensive than spending fourteen million dollars on something.
I think that's fair.
So we have to know where.
Angelo, you've been patient?
I just want to throw an idea out there, which may or may not be appropriate right now, but I'm going to say it anyway. Gosnold's already renting space in there for two hundred and fifty dollars a month. There's a great need on the Cape due to addiction for what they call sober houses. Maybe we want to sell the place to Gosnold. Housing. Just an idea.
Okay. Michael? Chris, to your point on the, on the cost to do the evaluation on the eleven thousand, we had that conversation. I think based on what Sean Libby's already done, and Linda's questions, I thought were very thoughtful, and some of them are going to lead to estimates. I don't know if you still have a copy of the two thousand and fourteen. If not, I'm sure we did. You know, even with the middle school, middle school repurpose committee was asked to come up with a cost per square foot. I have to believe we can come up with a rough cost on this and then make a decision on whether or not we want to put that kind of money into it, rather than, without going out with eleven thousand, which at least at that point, and to your comment about spinning your wheels, I don't want to see you spinning your wheels either. I would like to see, Peter's already mentioned, this is based on getting money, it's going to take some time, so if there's alternatives that can be done in this building, like I said before, I'm not a fan of moving a department head into another building and going through that expense. Can we, if it's even a, and I don't bring it up, brought it up before, but if it's even a consideration of this board to sell that building, should we reconsider tearing any piece of that building down? Because aren't we devaluing a town property that we're considering selling? And I guess I E. the garage, the doghouse. But until we get a report of what we're going to do with that building, shouldn't we reconsider tearing things down?
I agree with Michael.
I would tear down the doghouse section because that was hit with the ugly stick. So that one I would tear down because it would enhance the value.
You think?
Oh, it's awful.
It was a three to two vote to tear it down. It is slated to go down end of this week, beginning of next.
But I, but I think there's an interesting issue on the garage part. Something I don't know the answer to is, if that garage gets removed, and you know, a little foundation is taken away and dirt is dumped in there, can somebody say, can somebody rebuild that? What would be the, what are the building, you know, do you lose it, lose the ability to put a garage back there because of setbacks, et cetera? So that if we want to retain the value, should we be taking down that garage? And I don't know the answer to that, but the setback issue is leading me in a certain direction.
What direction is it leading you in?
Leave it there.
Well, I need direction from the board. I mean, literally, like, link's ready to go.
It was a four to one vote, not three to two, to tear it down.
I would, I would make a motion if it's appropriate, Peter, because Chris does need direction. And if, if there is consideration on selling that board, selling that building, we should, we should really have consideration on what, what we're selling and what the value is as it is with a garage versus without a garage. But because it's on the agenda, if it's appropriate.
Well, I think tearing it down is on the agenda. This is not actually on the agenda, but, but I'll listen to what the board has to say. In my opinion, we go ahead and tear it down, but that's just where I am.
And just to the question about, you know, the value, in my mind, Alborough House by itself has one value, probably a fairly minimal value, because it has limited parking to it. When you take, and if the concept is to relocate town hall to the middle school and reorient the governmental structure to the middle school, most likely you're now talking about selling the town hall property with its parking field and Alborough House, where it's common ownership, you could have that be merged as one lot. So, you know, I guess there's two considerations. One is, you know, what is the merged lot, and does that loss of that space really that significant in that light? And then the second, because that was, that house was purchased by the town? I don't know if there was any limitations on what we can or cannot do with that?
No. And I would just say, when it comes to that, you know, as a vote or whatever, it's got to be a bundled vote. Because the last thing we need to do, if you're going to put a bunch of money in the middle school and rehab it, move down there, is sit here with nobody doing anything with these buildings. It's got to be a bundled vote to say, this is what we're doing comprehensively, so.
Agree, agreed. I agree with that, that if, if, I'm not a fan of moving the town hall to the middle school, because I think it's going to be a boatload of money. And it is a school, just in the same way we may complain about this building is a, was a bank, that building is a school. So the renovations that will have to happen in order to make it function like a town hall are going to be pretty extensive. I mean, it's not just five dollars, it's going to be a boatload of money. So I'm not a fan of doing that because I don't think we need to do that. I think that the idea of moving the files over to the community center, I think that that whole idea is a great idea, because most of these files, and being an accountant by trade, I know that once you deal with the paperwork and you stick it in a box, you never see it again, but you have to keep it. So it's not like we're going to be going into those boxes every forty-seven seconds. So they can be very nicely done over at the community center in the basement, and I think that's a great idea. But we really do need to have an overall plan, not just little pickets, little blueberries here and there. We've got to deal with the bush, it's the whole thing.
So the question then becomes, I mean, part of, part of the answer is, you know, when are we going to see the numbers on the middle school? And I don't know when that is, but hopefully soon.
I see it completely different. I see it as three completely separate issues. I mean, whether we stay, Chris, and operate out of this town hall, to me is irrelevant on whether or not we move into the Alborough House, because I think that we can still explore space here. So I don't tie the Alborough House, this building, and the middle school together. I think the Alborough House is a separate decision entirely. Middle school's going to be what the middle school is, and that's going to take some time. This building, unless you're telling us, we don't have enough space in this building for the departments that we have, and that's, and that's what you're saying, then I think that the Alborough House estimate we come up with, and to my point about the garage, Chris, it's only, there is a value. The garage value is about seventy-five thousand dollars to build it today, if you can get a permit. If they were able to meet a setback permit. Parking, it is a house. What goes in there will determine how many parking spaces. It's already, it already has five allocated parking spaces. So I think it's a completely separate issue, and we don't have to tie the three of them together yet.
I'd like to build on something you said before about the town not liking selling any of its buildings or properties.
Maybe I said that in fairness.
Oh, I'm sorry. I attributed to the wrong person. I think that's true, but I think the town also will do things like lease or license buildings. And that's an opportunity with Alborough House. I mean, that's a building that's in the center of town, and there might be either a commercial group who would want it, or it could be turned into affordable housing or one of those things. And it may get, may get through town meeting, because they know at the end of twenty years or fifty years or whatever, it could be taken back. And I think that makes some of the town meeting a little bit more comfortable.
I just, I just make the statement or observation, I think the worst thing this town government does is buildings. And being a landlord, whatever it is, I mean, look at West Harris School, it's been there forever. Look at the youth and rec building. You know, we don't take care of these things, and we can't, because they're low on the priority list. And that's exactly what will happen if this building and the one next door become vacant, and we all decide to move down the street, take more space, build government, and we're going to end up with a big burden sitting here.
You know, several, a few months ago, the Board of Selectmen voted, you know, we agreed, we didn't need that space, that meeting space, that room. I find it hard to believe that we haven't found a use for that room, because, you know, I understand that we, once the door is locked, it can't be used as a meeting room, so that defeats that purpose. So are there departments on the second floor that can move in there? I mean, that's a pretty big room, if you take out all the boxes that are in there, and I know that most of the desks are out of there. It's a pretty big room. Would it be feasible to move the town engineer and the surveyor there? It's a huge, it would be a big open space, and I think it would seem like they would have better use in this big open space to configure a shared space with tables to lay out the plans, because I understand the plan issue. And I think we got to take a serious look at that, that if they need, if they need better space, that's a huge open room. And it would be, can we take a look at that, like, within the next week or two and just?
In fairness, it's already been done. It's already been looked at. The engineer looked at it. I asked him to please lay it out, see if it makes sense, and he came back, and he said it doesn't make sense.
So maybe the question is better phrased, since moving into the Alborough House couldn't happen until, say, a year from now.
Easily, yeah.
Well, whatever, based on funding, but couldn't happen until a year from now, would he like to move down there? Or would he and the surveyor care to move downstairs, I guess is the question?
The last time I forced a reorganization on the second floor, you know, I had a year's worth of heartburn over.
I understand, but he may, he may be thinking, they may be thinking that the Alborough House is a very near-term option, which, you know, from the stuff that's on the list that needs to be done, it won't be. So that, you know, maybe that change, you could just ask the question.
And even, even, it's not even a year, you know, it's not just town meeting, because the money would be available July first.
You're going to do the work.
And it's not like on July second, all that work gets done, and everybody moves over there. So it really is a year to a year and a half away. So as a different measure, would they be willing to see if that space downstairs worked? I mean, if it was easy, Chris, we'd all be doing it, so. I know that it's going to be a hassle.
Michael is next.
And Chris, I don't propose that you tell anyone, or that the board, I don't think the board is saying that we want to come up with a new reorganization plan. I think if you ask them, maybe they can come up with some ideas and, I don't know, ask the group. The Board of Selectmen doesn't want to move on the Alborough House until we decide what we're going to do with it. So in the interim, if you're unhappy with your space, would this space work? I think that would be my question.
You know, the funny part is, all this has been done. You know, I had that, I had that conversation with them. What do you recommend? Where would you go if not, you know, would you go to the Selectmen? And they came back and said, Alborough House. So I'm here to kind of represent sometimes, this isn't sometimes me representing myself, this is me representing kind of the organization.
That's fine, and if that's, if that's the feedback you got, that's fine. So the answer then is, he's not going to move anywhere until some later date, because there's no funding to do anything with it, so.
So, but also, if that's going to be the decision, then we all stop talking about it, including the people on the second floor.
Well, I'd love to have the board vote, maintain the status quo until after the election on the middle school. I mean, then, then I don't have to.
Let's think about it.
Let's think about that.
Keep going.
I have a thought. There's an awful lot of file cabinets in those offices there. I don't know how many of them are current files and how many of them are storage files, but I think, I would suggest that we take another look at those files and do two things. One, maybe we could hire somebody for the current files to get them to be more electronic. It'll cost money to do that, and, but it should save space. And if they, and they're, if they're storage files, if we can figure out how much space we would develop by moving those and do that, maybe everybody can get more space out there, and the file cabinets aren't going to be really concerned about being in the community center, I don't think.
I have a meeting later this week with Carolyn and Anita to start going over, how do we start moving the stuff down there?
But I think the other, other piece of converting some of the current stuff to electronics.
That's part of the plan, Angelo.
Would have to.
I think this married in having separation from a security or safety standpoint from this location to the community center. If one gets flooded, the likelihood of the other one being flooded is zero, you know, that kind of thing, so. Just keep that in mind.
Two last things. Christie, to your, prior to the reorg, which I wasn't here to vote on the reorg, everybody seemed happy with their space, correct?
It's not correct.
Okay. So they wanted to move, they wanted more space?
There was dysfunction on the second floor.
Yep.
Okay.
There was dysfunction on the second. So, fine. The second would be, does this board want to reconsider, and is it appropriate to make a motion to reconsider, the vote to tear down, so Chris has some direction, the garage at the Alborough House, until we decide what we're going to do with that building?
I'll entertain the motion, if you want to make it.
I make a motion that we reconsider our vote to tear down the garage at the Alborough House until we find, until we figure out the direction we're going with the building.
Second thought.
Okay, so your second discussion? My opinion is, you move forward, whether I think that the next person, if someone's going to buy that building, is going to make some significant changes anyhow, and would probably appreciate more parking space than they would a garage, so. That's just my opinion. And I think we talked about this forever, so we made a decision previously. I think we should stick with it, move forward. Any other discussion? Okay, here now.
I think Michael's numbers of the garage being worth seventy-five thousand dollars are pretty significant, considering that's probably, I don't know what the assessed value of the Alborough House is, but judging from the neighborhood, maybe it's at three fifty, I would say, four hundred, something like that. So that's a pretty substantial figure. So to replace that would be seventy-five thousand dollars, and they, they really couldn't replace it. So considering we are not sure we want to, as a town, even own that building five, ten years from now, I think it's silly I think it's silly to remove something and devalue the overall property.
If you think that garage is worth seventy-five thousand dollars, I'll sell it to you tonight.
To rebuild.
Yeah, well, if you think it's.
If you can get a permit.
No.
That's what I said.
Okay.
Just be clear.
All right.
To rebuild.
I don't think you can get a permit.
If you can get a permit. That's the other part of it.
Not going to get a permit.
All right, further discussion of the motion. Hearing none. Put it to the voters in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Same vote as, well, no, it's not the same vote as last time, it's three to two, so the motion fails.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next topic.
You know, one of the things, we did have several items, and this was, you know, the items that I had were on the agenda, but, you know, the next ones are, are not specifically identified on the agenda, so I'd like to just kind of rattle through them if I could.
Please.
I just, the board did vote on the holiday policy, and I realize that we did not really tell people when Town Hall would be open, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to kind of comment on that. So the week of Thanksgiving, there'd be no Selectmen's meeting on Monday, November twenty-third. A Town Hall will be open from eight thirty a.m. to eight o'clock p.m. Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, Town Hall will be open from eight thirty to four, and Wednesday from eight thirty to noon, closed on Thanksgiving, and then closed on the day after the holiday, November twenty-seventh. So just so people that are watching have a, a better sense for that. Also, we did ask, there was a concept brought up about an alternative member for the Board of Health. We did get a legal opinion back that says we can do that. There is a bylaw that allows for the increase or decrease in the number of persons to serve on an appointed board. It would have to go to town meeting as a bylaw change. So if that's something that the board is interested in pursuing, I can ask the attorney to draft that.
Right now, down two members right in the Board of, Board of Health.
Board of Health, yeah.
Serious problem.
And definitely the.
Serious problem.
The, the alternate, I think, is a, a really good idea.
Yeah, the alternate is a good idea. So I'll ask him to put together that language to get that commenced. Also, I had a request for a changing of a flag, which I was told that that's been done. The fire department did it at one of the cemetery sites. Let me see, on.
Town garden, wasn't it?
The town garden.
It was the town garden.
Oh, there were two?
No, the town gardens.
It was community gardens.
Yeah.
Community gardens, I'm sorry. On the, I don't need to do that one. On the D E P question, on the, I think, Angelo, you had brought in a issue about what happens with the, the concept of when land is converted from residential use to open space. Does that, how does that get accounted for? We did hear back from the consultant that said that what, where this town would realize the savings is when we design the system. If, as an example, Lot A had twenty housing spots, and we were going to sewer past that, we wouldn't provide for the sewer capacity to pick it up. So he said we wouldn't go in and make changes, but when it gets designed, that would be taken into account when, when property changes.
Oh, okay. Now, now I know what my question was.
There you go.
But, but it's really simple. I think there are a lot of people, particularly those who live in East Harwich, who has expressed it many times, who are concerned with the density and the number of houses in East Harwich. So if we have situations where we know there's a forty-nine acre lot that is now conservation
Correct.
that is not going to be used for housing, if we reduce the number of buildings we say we're going to sewer from five hundred to four hundred and fifty, they will be pleased. I mean, it's, it's getting something done, and it helps in the consideration of voting positively for the wastewater program because there's a lot of concern that you put the sewers in, and all of a sudden, you can build bigger buildings, have more bathrooms, rather than living within the Title V requirements. And I just think it's a, a way of, of helping get more votes in favor of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I, I think maybe what we could do is, I, maybe I could ask. I can ask the planner to kind of go through, and if a parcel was identified as being soured, and one of the numbers that was going to be soured, if that's now off the blocks, he should be able to take a total. I, I think the consultant was saying that it's just a matter of, we're not going to build it if it's not needed.
Oh, yeah.
But we can, we could total that out. I understand where you're, where you're going with that.
That's all. I mean, I, I just, it's sharing information with the residents, that's all.
Linda.
But, but, just to make sure I'm clear, when you say you won't sewer there, you still have to put the pipe in the road because there's twenty houses over here, and there's a piece of open space.
You gotta go buy it.
You gotta still go buy it. So it's not like it saves you a lot of money, right?
Yeah, I mean, really, where you get the savings.
Maybe you just won't put all the, maybe connections that would be going to those, but it's, it's, it's not like the pipe won't go there.
No, this isn't a saving money.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure, because I wasn't, I was, I wasn't sure what I was hearing.
This, I think, I think what Angelo's trying to get to is, when you look at, under any formula, what buildout is in East Harwich.
Yeah, he's talking buildout.
That to count in or subtract out, you know, land that's in conservation, or some restrictions on it that can't be developed or built on, and back that out of the number, so the number becomes more realistic, I would say.
And the other, other thing that built into the plans for East Harwich are the original proposal that went to town meeting, I believe, or almost went to town meeting, where there were some two hundred homes, I think, added, and X thousand square feet added. Those, you know, aren't, that's not going to happen either. So that should be taken out.
I'm suspecting that, you know, sometime in the next several weeks, the planning board is going to want to come before us with the whole East Harwich plan. I know, but I think that's the time to go through all this in great detail because it'll be in front of us at that point in time.
But I, I, as I remember, in reading of our proposal, our plan, our wastewater plan, it specifies those numbers that are added in. So it's not hard to find them. It's there in the plan.
Just a few more, a few more items.
Just one more comment on that, just back to what Angelo's saying. The other side of that, though, is the balance between the taxes that a residential property gives to the town versus converting everything to open space, which doesn't generate any tax dollars.
Right.
So there is a balance there, that every time we take something off the tax rolls, it's money that isn't supporting police, fire, community center, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Absolutely.
So there, there is a, it's not just a black or white decision.
It's not as clear as I have.
It's not as clear.
My piece of land, so let's not have anybody else build anything in town. I mean, it's, you know.
Pretty much. It's not that clear cut.
Yeah. All right, Chris.
Just three more. I swear I'm trying to get done. On the D E P for the flow-down requirements that basically Dave Young again kind of came back and said that we do have to adopt kind of as a minimum use standard, the sewer regulations in Chatham, if we're using a Chatham facility, you have to have that equal, equal, uh, equal requirements. So he, he was going to take a look at that and see the elements that we can remove that aren't applicable, but we will have to basically keep that. That's something that D E P does encourage. Also, Board of Health issue.
Encourages or requires?
I'm sorry.
Encourages or requires?
Requires.
So not encourages, require, because the second time you said encourages.
Well, I think we have, I think we have to go through it and see what the ramifications are, quite frankly, because I'm sure there's some things that are very specific to Chatham, and there may be numbers or concepts that have to change, but let's get through it.
And then, the last one, there was a question about a person going onto the Board of Health that was a septic installer. And this is actually a new one on me, that if you, the board can actually approve that, but it does have to be a, it has to be a local acceptance to allow for that to happen. So it has to be a vote to go to town meeting. So I guess there's someone that was interested, maybe for the interview board. I can, I'll forward this information. But in order to allow that to happen, you have to accept a local statute. Twenty-five years of doing it, I don't think I've ever seen a thing that's stat specifically tied.
Chris, if they didn't, if they weren't doing business in the town of Harwich, would that make a difference?
If, as long as they agreed not to do business in Harwich, and that would make a difference.
A lot of these guys would be a huge impact, I mean, you know, business-wise and.
Right. So that's a decision the individual has to.
Somebody like that would be terrifically knowledgeable about the topics.
And then the, the last one is, I had brought up about the I M A, and can we do, if there was a ballot question that had a dead exclusion for an I M A with Chatham, and that it was four payments over a twenty-year cycle. So I did have a conversation with John Giorgio in regards to that, and he did follow up with a person at, actually changed their name, Locklord is our bond counsel, and that is very doable. So we could have a ballot question that if the payment for the I M A was going to occur, whatever, six to nine million dollars over a twenty-year cycle, we, as long as the voters know that the total cost is going to be nine million expended out over that twenty years, that that is doable. So I thought that was encouraging to get that, to get that ruling.
That is, that is actually good because I'd hate to go back and have a different town meeting say, no, you can't bond the third payment.
Yeah, I thought that would be a significant detriment to the town.
That would be ugly.
That concludes my.
So the interesting point is, you could get very different interest rates when you go to borrow the money.
Sure.
If you go to borrow the money, especially if it's stretched out, huh?
You should borrow, it's fast.
Well.
You can't, you have arbitrage.
Yeah, you can't do that.
Okay. Selectmen's reports, do you know?
I have nothing.
Michael. Angelo?
Just a quick comment. In our packet, there was some information from the wastewater committee. We should probably be discussing some of those kinds of activities. There was one comment about working with Dennis and Brewster, which of course, we've been discussing with, so that's certainly a surprise. And the other one dealt with the.
The governance.
The governance of wastewater. So eventually, we need to talk about those again, I guess.
Well, my, I thought our plan was, Chris, you're going to talk to your counterpart and Dennis, I thought.
We've actually tried to schedule a date. We haven't had that done yet.
And so then you got a discussion, bring that back to us. My thoughts are, one of the questions to the finance committee, when they come to meet with us in a couple of weeks, is where do they stand? Or what's their opinion on the governance? And then I think, once we know that, we need to hear back officially, I think, if the Water Commission has voted the plan, if you will. And then I think at that point, we're ready to have our discussion about it, so.
Yeah, I did go to the Water Commission meeting that last Tuesday, I think it was.
Friday morning.
Friday morning, thank you. And they did vote to, to do that, and they didn't send a letter over, so they were going to send a letter. So there is a letter that they endorsed to C W M P.
Okay, we also, we also asked them, quite frankly, to put, to get, put some thought as to how they'd organize things and whatnot, and I'm sort of waiting to see something come this way, and then we'll get it all scheduled, so.
Well, I would ask, they did, we do have a letter in our packet, but it has no rationale in it at all. It's just a statement of what they recommend. It would be helpful if they provided some rationale.
I know, where's that?
That was from the wastewater implementation committee. And, and Water Commissioners, they do come back before us, I believe, and they, I know Dan's been putting together.
I told them that we'd invite them back when they're ready.
Yeah, I think they're ready, but I'll bet you a definite.
Well, I want to have the finance committee weigh on it officially, and then once we get beyond that, you know, we could do it later, we could have them come in if they're ready, so.
Yep.
Okay, my only question is, could we get an update? We're starting to talk about the budget and whatnot. Could we get an update on the software for displaying the municipal budget information?
Yeah, actually, all the material is in, and he was going to go through and vet it. Andy was out most of last week, so we would have probably had it squared away, but it's almost done. And we were planning on having a lady come in to do the presentations to show, pull it out.
All right, thank you. That'd be, I think it'd be helpful even going forward, you know, we could load it in, once we get the existing data, the go-forward data, we could probably load in the thing, and it'd probably help us visually understand where all the money's going. I'm just guessing. Okay, anything else? Ray Jaren, thank you.